Conform with federal tax regulations.
Thank you. Okay, so now I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer followed by the flag salute. Yes, Councilman Shelton would lead us in the fast voice. If the city clerk would read the video statement now, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with uninterrupted on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, if everybody would please turn off or silence your phones and pagers. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
So now I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda? And we will go to presentations.
Okay, tonight we have the Finance Department Automated Payment Program and Utility Information.
I'm Michelle Neely with the Finance Department, and I'm going to present information tonight on payment options available to our customers. One of the department's primary responsibilities is utility billing and collections. The Finance Department bills approximately 7,200 customers every two months. Customers have always been able to make payments by check, through the mail, in the Dropbox, and over the counter. Now, in addition to cash and check payments, the city accepts both debit and credit cards over the counter as well. Currently, an automatic payment program, an interactive voice response system, Click2Gov, our online payment processing, and EFT, electronic funds transfer payment options, have been made available to our customers. Dropboxes are available to customers 24/7 and are convenient for customers who want to drop off a check after hours or on the weekend. They also offer customers a quick alternative to waiting in line. This is especially significant on payment due date when customers want to get their payment in to avoid penalties. Only check payments should be made via the Dropbox. In addition to the traditional payment methods of cash and checks, the department began accepting debit cards in November of 2001. Many customers prefer the convenience of using a debit card to writing a check. There is an advantage to the city as well in that these transactions are approved at the time they occur and do not incur return check charges. They are also more efficient for staff to process as there are no checks to be endorsed and deposited. There is a fee of approximately 55 cents per transaction which is paid by the city. In May of 2007, the department began accepting MasterCard and Visa. Here again, this provided another convenient way for customers to make payment. They have the same benefits as debit cards for the city, reduced return checks, and more efficient to process, at a cost of approximately 2% of the transaction amount. For example, a payment of $200 would cost approximately $2. In the fall of 2001, the Finance Department implemented the Direct Payment Program for utility customers. This program allows customers to pay their City of Galt utility bill via direct debit to their checking account. Customers can have the payment deducted on the due date, or they can choose to have one half of their amount due debited monthly to help balance their monthly budget. Customers continue to receive a bi-monthly billing statement but no longer have the task of writing checks, paying for postage and mailing, waiting in line to pay, or penalties caused by late payments. There is an average, there is an advantage to the city in that these payments are processed in batch, requiring little data entry and processing time compared to individual checks. We have consistently had about 10% participation in this program. In April of 2008, we implemented the Interactive Voice Response System, which we refer to as the IVR. When a customer calls the main finance number, they are connected to the IVR, which gives them an option to obtain account information and make payments in English and Spanish. Customers can make payments to their account via credit card or using a debit card with a MasterCard or Visa logo 24/7. During normal business hours, a customer can press zero at any time during the call and be connected to an accounting assistant in the Billing and Collections Division. Again, there is an advantage to the city in that these payments are processed in batch requiring no data entry. This significantly reduces processing time when compared to over-the-counter Dropbox or mail payments. The fee, which is equal to approximately 2% of the transaction amount, is paid by the city. In addition to providing information and allowing customers to make payments over the phone, the IVR also provides a cost-effective way to notify customers in danger of shut-off or non-payment. Calls customers provides information as to amounts due and due dates to prevent fraud. Prior to implementation of this system, Public Works implemented a total average of 489 door hangers by hand each bill cycle. In 2010, the average was down to 169 per cycle, due primarily to the ability to notify customers via the iPhone system. We processed 250 payments each bill cycle via the IVR, which is approximately 3% of January of 2010, the department implemented HTE's Click2Gov online products, allowing customers to access information about their accounts and to make payments using Visa, MasterCard, or a debit card with either of these logos, as well as checks over the Internet. Customers who click on the online payment button on the city's webpage are directed to the Click2Gov portal. For fraud protection purposes, customers are required to contact the Finance Department to obtain their cycle route number for first-time setup. During the setup process, they are prompted to create their own PIN number, which they will use to access Click2Gov in the future. Together with the IVR, Click2Gov has increased the ability of our customers to access information and make credit, debit, and check payments from the convenience of their own phone or PC. Recently, Click2Gov has been updated to allow customers to schedule recurring payments as well, eliminating the need to go online and make the payment each cycle. The cost for these transactions, approximately 2% of the transaction amount, is paid by the city. We process an average of 460 payments each bill cycle through Click2Gov, which is about 6% of our total billing. An electronic funds transfer, or EFT, transfers funds from our customers' online banking to the city's checking account. Many of our customers choose to pay their bill via their own bank's online billing program. Without EFT processing setup, this generates a paper check which is then mailed to the city. Customers expect this transaction to process quickly electronically, but this is not always the case. This has caused quite a bit of frustration with customers who have incurred penalties and even shut offs due to the time it takes for these checks to get to us through the mail. With regard to efficiency, processing these bank-generated checks by mail actually takes longer than customer check payments, as they do not include the return portion of the bill which allows the payments to be scanned. In November of 2010, the department implemented the first phase of EFT processing. This allows some of the bank-generated checks to be processed electronically and deposited more quickly. We currently process these transactions via manual data entry, but hope to automate that process in the future. We are also looking into expanding the process to cover as many banks as possible. We currently process approximately 1% of our payments via EFT. Implementation of these programs has benefited our customers through expanding their ability to access information and make payments on their City of Galt utility accounts. We have also increased the types of payments we accept to allow customers more flexibility in this area. We have increased efficiency through batch processing, thus reducing staff time spent opening mail, entering receipts, stamping, and depositing checks. In addition, efficiencies have been gained in the delinquency notification process For some other city departments with higher dollar transactions such as building, credit card acceptance is cost prohibitive. Parks and Recreation, including the Pool in the Market, currently have the capability to accept debit cards only. And Parks and Rec staff is in the process of implementing software which will allow customers to sign up for programs online and pay by credit card. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Very nice, very precise, and very short. Thank you very much, and right to the point. Thank you very much.
Before we go to public comment, I wanted to be sure that there were no deletions or any changes in the agenda. Okay, then we will go to public comments.
Okay, under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. Our first speaker, Speaker Russell Flutie.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
This is my first time up here, so nice to see you, all the members of the city council, everyone in the audience. I'm a new adult mentor for the Galt City Council Youth Committee, and we're requesting for the pool fees to be waived for our first event that we're very excited about. It's the Kids' Day at the Pool and Skate Park. So the main reason why we're asking for the pool fees to be waived is because if it's free, the kids are going to come. That's just the simple fact. Also, it'll allow us to offer free food and free prices. It's starting to sound pretty good. So, the youth, if we impress the youth, that's going to be our best advertisement for our future events. It'll bring us better publicity for the next event, and it'll give us a higher chance at retaining the students that come at future events. It'll also help create the tone for future events so that the kids know that it's fun and that hopefully it will be very, it will be either free or reduce costs. So please help us in making this a successful event for the community.
Thank you. One day I'll get it right, Randy.
A little more practice.
Randy Hudson, 44A Street. My public comments on the public comment. Last time we were here at the meeting, they were talking about shortening the public comment up to three minutes, which is kind of like telling your constituents, vote me into office and then shut up. Five minutes isn't that long. Most people come up here, I've noticed in the last year I've been coming to these meetings, most people don't take more than half of it anyway. Doesn't give, someone, I've seen people come up here that are intimidated, you know, it takes them a little time to get their thoughts together. They should be allowed that option, or that, we're escaping, privilege. We vote you into office to listen to our, the citizens of the community, not to run amok and do things that you want without hearing what we got to say. For example, you know, higher this year, I've asked a total of six questions, haven't had one answer yet from the city council. Five questions about the Constitution, one question about the cameras for the license plates, I still haven't heard anything about that. No report's been given to me or sent to me or a phone call, which is par for the course. I don't get many phone calls back from the police department. I have issues with them either. Got robbed earlier this year. Very seldom did I get a return phone call for issues, you know, like giving names to likely witnesses, things like that. This whole city needs to be a little bit more cordial about their phone service, I guess. Constitutional questions, you know, it's nice that we put one up, actually, I'm glad that you guys can all recognize the Constitution when you see it, in order to put it up in the lobby. But you did take an oath to uphold and defend that Constitution. That's a serious thing. And I'm sure glad that the doctor that operated on me three years ago took his oath, Hippocratic oath, more seriously than you guys seem to take that, the oath that you took. You need to read it, understand it, go by it, and stop just going and running on platform of, "I'm going to go to Sacramento and get money for my town so I can further enslave my citizens to the federal government." That's about all I got to say. Shoot, I have two minutes left here.
Thank you.
Laura, did you want to speak under public comment, or did you have a specific item on the agenda?
Sorry, sorry. My name is Laura Brandon. I moved to Galt in 1987. In 1988, I started working for Schaefer, Susan Boyd as a realtor. In 1996, we started building new homes in Galt. My purpose of being here is to help regenerate Galt's economy, stop the existing home values from declining, Paul, by building new homes. Going into existing neighborhoods and redeveloping new products that enhance the area. Building new homes will supply new jobs, new homeowners which help build our community. The limits we're facing is the building permit fees. So if we can have a strategy that starts with lowering the building permits, then maybe in increments, as builders step up and start building, then so many homes get built, then increasing the building permit fees until they go all the way up as the economy keeps building, and then we can raise the costs and we can raise the pricing. But at this time, the building costs, lot costs and building permit fees is not allowing builders to build. The fact, we have not been able to afford the full print, us personally, since 2007. All new homes and houses in volume stopped in 2008. In 2009, there was only one building permit, one building permit that was pulled for a home. To this day, I don't know if any builder that submitted any new plans have any intentions in building any homes here in Galt. This really has hurt our city, existing homeowners, neighborhoods, values, employees, and employers. Being able to build new homes will benefit you, the schools, jobs, the city, economy, and our community. We have beautiful freeways, we have beautiful commercial buildings, we have a beautiful senior park, the restaurants, but we need some new housing. And to stop the declining of the existing homes, all of the REOs out there, is going to be us builders going out there and building new homes. But the only way this is possible is if you guys will take a real hard look at this and consider lowering the building permit fees and allowing builders to go ahead and step out there and start building again. So we're developing new senior, I mean, so now we need new homes with new homeowners to enjoy all that you guys have made possible here in the City of Galt. So I appreciate you guys taking a look at that. So basically, what I just make a comment, and then we get back to this, so there's nothing, we don't talk about this at this time?
We would refer it to the staff to review and come back later.
Over a year ago, we had a builders' meeting, and I know the city manager was there, and there's several other faces here that I see, and there were several builders that were there. And it was indicated that you guys would be willing to look at lowering the building permit fees. We went ahead and we stepped up, and we have three plans in, and we're ready to go, but we can't, and we won't be able to build if this is not really looked at. All the other builders indicated and pleaded with you guys to lower the building permit fees. And so, since that year has passed, we have not had anything else from any of you guys. And still to this day, I don't know if any builders that are even going to build.
We did, the council did approve a new impact fee study about a year, a little over a year ago, and the fees were lowered for traffic fees, a number of the other fees, they were lowered. They may not have been lowered to the level that some would have liked, but they were lowered, and some of them were lowered to a significant level.
Well, with the way the housing prices are right now, you have to lower them down to make it affordable. And, I mean, it's major, I mean, we're looking at $20,000 reduction in building permit fees. But if you do that, and you do it in increments, you're going to get a lot of builders stepping out there, and then it's going to stop the homes are declining here in Galt, and it's going to raise the values. And you're generally at a new beautiful step here, so, and able to justify the pricing, we're going to have to go out there and start building new houses in the neighborhoods of existing, where existing homes have lowered the values, and bring those values up. And then, as more housing is built, then more developers will go out and start building new homes.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, that the fees are so high that it's difficult to start building again with this economy. I'm not sure how our fees compare to other cities. I think we are pretty comparable.
We did, when we did, when we last did the fee update, we did have a comparison for other cities, and certainly not the lowest, certainly not the highest. We can update that study and see where we fall. I know there have been some cities that have made some adjustments. I think the challenge is, like Ms. Brandon said, is you have to lower them so significantly to get anybody to start building again, that you're almost charging nothing for the fees, in which case that means that existing homeowners are subsidizing that development. Because all the traffic you're putting on the streets, all the impact of the parks and your water and sewer systems, I mean, money's not coming in when you build a home, and that means all the existing residents are paying for those costs. And so that's where it becomes difficult. And I know we've, you know, we had a, we had a meeting with Ms. Brandon, I believe, mayor and vice mayor were there several months ago, and that was, you know, some of the concerns that were expressed. Certainly, if the council would like staff to reexamine it, we can bring back different options, but, you know, those are the difficult choices, and staff's recommendation has always been in the past, that we take a look at what's necessary in the fees to meet the needs, and so that the new homes that are being built mitigate the impact to our facilities. So we're not giving away those services. But certainly, if the council wanted to take a different approach in the future, wanted to give us some direction to go back and take a look at artificially lowering those fees, then we certainly take the council's direction.
When was the last time we compared our fees to other cities?
About a year ago, when we did the fee update.
And that was before CFD had the fire impact fees, correct?
Yeah, I don't think we compared that, because that's, that's really, that's the, you know, the CFD's fees, we don't, we choose the path that's for us. So we looked at the ones we were updating, which was parks, traffic, general government, and so forth. And it's really difficult to compare one city's fees to another, because different cities include different things in those fees. For example, some cities have really high assessment districts where they're charging their residents on an annual basis through their property taxes. Other cities don't, they put it all up front on the impact fees, and so it's really hard to just look at impact fees in a vacuum and say, okay, compare Galt's impact fees to Delk Grove's or any other city, because each city is unique and they have their own challenges. And what you do when you do these studies is you try to, you try to figure out what the impact of those developments are on your community. So you figure, okay, we're going to have to, you know, put in new roads, new interchanges, build new parks, put in new water sewer lines, and we know this work has to happen. And so, we figure out how much vacant land we have left. In other words, how many new homes we're going to be building, how many commercial stores we're going to be building, and spread those costs out among all the new development that's going to be coming in. Otherwise, if you build the homes, you don't collect the fees, then that means either you're going to have terrible traffic, because you haven't collected the money to build the roads, and so all your existing homeowners are going to be upset that you put all this new traffic on the roads and you haven't expanded your systems, or you haven't built new parks, and all the new residents are using all the old parks, or you name it, you have those impacts that aren't being mitigated. And that's always the challenge, is you try to match your fees to your needs in your community, and it varies from one city to another. And so you don't, it's not just a free market system where we're trying to match and compete with other cities. It's really based on the individual city needs.
Well, I think the goals of this council have been to try to increase our economic development in many different ways, and I know that we're always open to listen to any developers that have some specific suggestions, maybe not just, we need to lower our fees, look at the fees and see where we can, as we did previously with the Parks and Rec fees, I think. We didn't increase those as we had planned. So I would say we're ready to do what we can do, but we have to look at the things that our city manager mentioned, the impact. But if you have specific suggestions on ways we can look at those fees, then I can guarantee you we'd be willing to listen.
Okay, because the building permit fees are from $43,000 to $45,000, lot costs, and then your building costs, and the housing market, it's just not there. So, I understand what you're saying about building new homes and people being frustrated, but the existing homeowners are going to be happy to have new homes, because they're going to be going into existing areas and redeveloping those areas and bringing their home prices up. When we had the meeting about a year ago, several builders had spoke and had mentioned, you know, lower them down to $27,000 for the first 50, then after that, you know, keep them in increments of $5,000 until the buildings really start going. And then, we're, all the builders, most of the builders are the same builders that are here and are going to be here in the town, had no problem. Once the economy really got up there, then raise the building permit, solve it to $50,000, even if you had to pay $52,000 or $53,000. But at the time when the markets goes up, then help us right now, when we're trying to help the community and bring new jobs, and plus, keep ours up the flow, too.
Okay, probably should, if the council's interested in exploring this, my suggestion would be that council provide direction to staff to bring this back and to put it on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting.
I can't see where, myself, in my opinion, where it would hurt. I know it's only been a year, but a lot of things have changed in a year, and maybe we could take a look at it again. Maybe come together and have some kind of compromise we can work on.
Any other council members have any comments on this?
I have a comment. I know that Barbara, you were a co-seeing too when I was mayor, and we used to have instruction meetings, and we, at that time, we were kind of changing the name and called the Mayor's Forum, Development Forum. I believe the last time we had this, maybe that's the one you're referring to, was back in October. So I'm wondering, maybe through staff, Jason, we could give him direction to see if there is a need to maybe set up something. I mean, normally, it was by the mayor and the vice mayor. And, I mean, normally, it was by the mayor and the vice mayor, usually, I'm not trying to volunfiguate it, you know, I mean, usually, the status kind of comes with being the mayor and the vice mayor, it could be with those. That would be my suggestion, to ask Jason and staff to look into that, see if there is maybe a need for some of the developers to sit down and discuss that.
I think that's a good idea, then we can get input from other developers as well, to see if there is a market that we're missing out on. So, I think that would be our direction to staff then.
Okay, we'd be happy to coordinate that, invite some of the local and area builders, and see if we can get another forum put together and get some feedback on what, what it is, what, what is it going to take to get the housing development to start coming back to Galt? And whether fees are the only issue, or there are other issues, or if that's enough to really get the, the building kicked off, that'll be some of the questions we'll ask.
Yeah, considering the, the foreclosures and the vacant homes, I think we could look at the whole picture that way, with input from other developers. I'm sorry, Councilman Shelton.
I was going to say, maybe that will get us back to the table, sitting down and discussing. And I know that you're probably not the only developer that has some potential questions for it. We've got to sit down, it's open line of communications, whether we agree or not, but we have here, you know, you're here in the council that will do that.
Is there redevelopment money for building permits?
Well, the redevelopment, redevelopment doesn't exist. It's, it's, um, something that we'll be discussing later on tonight, but as you may or may not know, the, the governor and people in Sacramento took the redevelopment, as it was, away. They've given us an option that we will be considering later on tonight.
So are we still going to have the C Street improvements all the way down for redevelopment?
Uh, we don't know.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to.
Trying to find a way to make, make it work, but the state basically killed redevelopment agencies unless cities make significant payments to the state to keep the redevelopment agencies alive, and so that is on the agenda later.
It's called legalized extortion.
Thank you.
I don't want to say.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
My country. The question was legalized extortion or not, that's still near.
My country, General Park Company, I think it's really important that we really take a good look at this. Jason said, well, about the CSD, well, the CSD, as you know, right off the bat, you're going to pay four hundred dollars more for the CSD permit. And by 2014, you're going to be paying fourteen hundred dollars. So, at some point, somebody's got to look at the fees in relationship to, when, I don't know if we'd build a house this year, but I know, we, I thought we built the last house in two thousand eight, or, and I think that still holds. So, I, I think the city's got to step up and, and we've got to take a good look, along with Randy, when he was doing his thing. I think the main thing is get the builders back and then see what we can do, because when, you're not doing anything, and I think the building industry and Galt is as important as anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The rest are for issues on the agenda. Okay, so, is there, where it's consent calendar, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, please do read it, it's quite long. It is quite long.
I want to pull a couple first, and I'll tell you why. Do you want to read them all first?
No, tell me what you're going to say.
I want to pull five, six, seven, and eight, with a little explanation.
We have eight items on consent, although four were just pulled. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special meetings of July nineteenth and July twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven, and the regular meeting of July nineteenth. Number two, approval of the City of Galt Warrens. Number three, foreclosure proceedings for Community Facilities District nineteen eighty-eight dash one. Number four, foreclosure proceedings for nineteen ninety-nine dash one reassessment district. And number five, which was pulled and will be discussed, adoption of an ordinance regarding appeals of administrative decisions pertaining to the Uniform Code and California Code. Number six, which was pulled, adoption of an ordinance pertaining to violations for failure to maintain parking, landscaping, and refuse. Number seven, which was pulled, excuse me, an ordinance regarding rules and regulations relating to the Galt City Council Youth Committee. And number eight, which was pulled, an ordinance regarding posting places.
Okay, you want to discuss those? This is a second reading on all of those.
But this is just what I wanted to say. I know it's the second reading, but, you know, a lot of people watch us at home, and some people don't know what's going on. And I've always been kind of annoyed, my own self, of just looking, take this ordinance and make that one, and this and this, this and that. When you could have a one little liner that could kind of tell people what it is. So I'm going to tell everybody what the one, one line, what five, six, seven, and eight is. So five is just where we are having a building appeal hearing officer, and that after he hears the complaint, we have decided that we'd like the decision submitted to the city council for review and final decision. Number six is just that has to do with parking, landscaping, refuse, recycling facilities shall be maintained in good condition as determined by the city. So I think it's important that people know that this ordinance now says, you know, keep everything looking a little better in your neighborhood. Number seven was just that we, the ordinance was just to establish rules and regulations relating to the Galt Youth Committee, so that's what that was. And number eight was just that instead of posting any notice, public notices that we had at the DHA office, we were just going to move them to the Marion O. Lawrence Library. So that's just what I want to say.
Okay, and do you want to follow up with a motion?
Yeah, you can put that in with the rest of them now, finally.
Put it back on consent. Okay, now do we have a motion?
I'm listening to consent calendar.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz, is there a second?
No, second.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Payne.
Aye. Consent calendar has passed unanimously under regular calendar.
Okay, it's first is under city council, amendment of the city council procedural guidelines relating to time limits for public speakers. This would be Vice Mayor Powers.
Having been on the planning commission and also being, going to other city councils, it is my opinion, and it could be or could not be with the rest of the city council, that most cities and other commissions just allow three minutes for public speaking. I personally think that anyone that has something to say, that usually has it written down, can get up and get the point across in three minutes. Anything after that, sometimes to me, is pretty much rambling and repetition. And I know that there was a little bit of amending to go to this, are you going to read that, Steve, or?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so when you're done with your comments.
Okay, that was kind of my comment.
Okay. Council, there's a, a one-page exhibit A that was put in your seats this evening, and what it provides is what the current rule in, in your procedural guideline states, and that the public speakers will be limited to five minutes. And under that, there were three options for amending this rule that were prepared by staff. First, very simply, under A, would be public speakers will be limited to three minutes in addressing the city council, just very straightforward. The second one is public speakers will normally be limited to three minutes in addressing the city council. However, the mayor may shorten or extend the time limit for public speakers as he, she deems necessary or prudent. And then the last one would establish three minutes as the time limit, but allow the city council to shorten or extend the time limit as necessary. My recommendation would be B, and I think a good example of a situation where sometimes we need some flexibility was the Walmart hearing a couple of weeks ago, where we extended the time for the people that were coming forward with the appeal, and then had a different time limit for other members of the public. There may also be times where if we had a packed house, where you may want to go less than three minutes. And normally, in, in most jurisdictions, the mayor does in fact have the discretion to adjust the, the process for handling the meeting as unique situations come forward. So, if you do amend the rule, my, my recommendation would be B on the sheet presented to you this evening.
Would you repeat what B said?
Uh, B is, public speakers will normally be limited to three minutes in addressing the city council. However, the mayor may shorten or extend the time limit for public speakers as he, she deems necessary or prudent.
Okay, thank you. Is there a discussion from the council members on this?
I have some comments.
Okay.
I know that just a little bit of history, this was brought up about two and a half years ago, and I believe it was, could have been Barbara and I, or myself and Barbara. And it was discussed and discussed, but anyway, it didn't move forward. There, we had asked the city clerk if she would do a survey, do you have a copy of that? Of that, it's from Northern California down into San Diego. It wasn't all of the leader cities, but it was forty-one cities. Twenty-nine have three minutes, and actually, twelve of those have five minutes. I know that if you were to go to some of the organizations that I've been involved in personally, with fire districts, water districts, different civic organizations, it's three minutes. There's that one exception of that one time when an individual may need, and a fun example was tonight, when the lady came up and spoke. And it's always been if you're the president, or you're the mayor of the city, or you're president of the fire board, that it's the discretion of the mayor or the president to flex that. I was in agreeance of moving that from five minutes to three before, and I still am. Not just to cut people off, I know that when you go to the podium, if you've never done that with a camera, it can be a little intimidating just that, you know, alone. But I believe that council, even, you know, this council especially, has been very receptive to someone coming up and speaking and stating to you, or that individual, I'll just use myself as an example, or Randy, I know that you've ran out of time, but why don't you meet with me and the city manager, or whoever the department head was, and let's discuss that a little further? So it gives staff and the council member the opportunity, if need be, to bring that back in two weeks or three weeks, or mitigate, you know, get back to open line of communications. So the bottom line is, the proposal, I am in agreeance of changing it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. If we get a citizen that comes up, before they even start speaking, if they request five minutes, could it be granted at that time, or is this something that would have to work out ahead of time before the meeting started, or how are we going to work that?
Well, if number B says that, you know, if they're talking, and I guess if they need it longer.
Well, that's what I was asking, it says shorten or extend the time limited for public speakers as he, she deems necessary. So, if a citizen comes up and knows it's going to take longer than three minutes, can they say, hey, can I have five minutes tonight? As long as it'll do it continually, on a continual basis, you know?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is at the discretion of the mayor then.
Um, it would be, and, you know, the person can make the, the request at the front end, but the important thing that we need to keep, need to keep in, in mind is that we need to keep, treat people consistently. And so, I think if somebody just came forward and said, I'd like five minutes, and there wasn't justification given to the council, to the mayor, that at least my recommendation would be that we not provide it. But you might have a speaker, for example, that's coming forward, and it might be a, an item that the council feels is, is complicated, and there might have been a situation where the person was interrupted by either members of the audience or council questions, and the mayor might say, you know, okay, your time's up, but because of the uniqueness of this issue, I'm going to grant you an additional two minutes. And that would certainly be appropriate under, under item B as proposed tonight.
I would just want to make sure the option was there, you know, because I didn't want to stifle people just because, but like I said, as long as it doesn't become a habit, I, I have no problem with it. As long as we, they have the right to ask, hey, listen, this is going to take me a little longer, three minutes, would you mind? I'd take four, five minutes at most. And then it'll be up to the mayor. I could, I could work with that.
Any other comments? If not, I think we have a public comment on that item.
We do.
Al Baldwin.
Good evening, Al Baldwin, a very concerned citizen of Galt. And I live in this wonderful city because it's a city of character. Tonight, I do want to compliment Mary Lou Powers for at least looking into it a little bit about what other cities do with this three-minute thing. And, but I would like to think that this council would want to give more to Galt and take away from Galt. And, in my opinion, three minutes and not five minutes for speaking and public, and public comments is just not enough time for some people. Elk Grove, Sacramento, Lodi, might think three minutes is fine, but they all have three to four times more people in their city. Now, if you just say, they speak for three minutes, Randy went through and said all these cities were three minutes, one thing you didn't compare is how many speakers do they got coming up there? And maybe that's the reason they have a three-minute time limit on this. Now, if you have a lot of people wanting to speak, say ten or more, then it might be okay to say three minutes. You've done this in the past, you have total control over this. And you'll have the speaker sheets before they speak, so you'll know how many you have. So you have real control over this thing, it's flexible, which is nice in a small town. If you think we, the citizens, are talking too much, some council members' comments are much longer at times. One of them tonight, not being too critical, spoke almost as much as five minutes off and on as the speaker was up here. So, you know, something to look at. I think one council put a time limit on that, too. And I think Randy was here, maybe Barbara was involved in it with Darrell Clare, and he brought it up, and you guys all voted on it, that any comments that you make, I think it was two minutes, but it may have been three minutes from up there, because the meetings kept going longer and longer all the time. I don't know what happened to that, if it, if it's got to be voted out, it should still be in, I'm not sure. The, the five minutes is not that much time to listen to concerns of the people who elected you. Some councils want to control the message, and this is one way to do it. Sometimes councils don't want to have this bombard in them a lot, so they reduce the time. You get a gentleman like tonight with the youth council, he says it's his first time up here. Now, he had a real challenge, but he's going to do really good the next time, because if I can help him some way, I'm going to. And I know ways to make it short if we have to make it short, but I'd prefer a little bit longer, five minutes possibly. You as leaders were given two ears. I think you should listen twice as much as you speak. If you pass this, I think the council members should abide by this with their comments during the message. And that's what you guys had before. So what you wish for, you're going to get. And you may not want it or like it, but if you say three minutes, then I say at least, well, say three minutes or less, that each council person can, can start talking about whatever. And it could be what I did over the weekend, we went to meetings here, we went to meetings there, and it goes on and on and on. And five minutes for someone up here to speak and to get their point across is, is really a challenge for a lot of people. Sometimes, if you're up here a lot, or if you get involved with public speaking, maybe it's a lot easier for you. So it's, you don't have to speak as fast, you don't get jumbled, you don't lose your spot, you get flustered. And five minutes in a small town like ours, twenty-three thousand, compared to these large towns where they have maybe fifteen speakers that come up, or ten speakers that come up, you might want to look into how many speakers they have on an average. We don't have that many. You're just looking at it, and I compliment you on at least looking into other towns and thinking, well, hey, maybe we could cut back here, maybe the meetings would go quicker. Not necessarily. You don't have that many speakers, unless it's a night. And then if it's a night where it's big, like Walmart or whatever it is, you'll have the speaker sheets up there before, and you can say ten or more, three minutes. We're going to ask everybody to speak for three minutes or less tonight, because we have. have such a crowd. We want to keep everybody, all going, and everybody should get their own comment. I just want to say, thank you for letting me present this. Something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Are there any other comments? Councilman Cruz?
I want to say I appreciate the fact that you've visited this, but I, I truly believe that we need to listen to the people. Al brought up a good point. Five minutes is not that much, two minutes is different, okay? I honestly think we should leave it as it is.
Well, and then I'll weigh in on my comments briefly. There are times when there are so many items scheduled on the agenda that when the meetings extend really long, and I think this is one of the things we had in consideration when it came up in the past, that by the time you get to the end of the agenda, you're, you've lost your audience, for one. They're not going to stay up and listen, and they, and they should be listening. This is a time, too, where it's important for the public to hear the whole agenda, and not just everybody's comments. The other thing I would say is, I know for a fact that this council is available to the citizens. We keep office hours. We are open to you. Maybe not the whole night of a council meeting, so if you, if you really do have something to discuss with us, I feel certain that every one of us would be available, and you can have a more meaningful discussion, because then you can have back and forth. Whereas normally, at this public comment time, it's a time for comment, not so much debate. And I think in most cases, people can make their comments in three minutes. I will leave it at that and call for the motion, if there is one.
Well, I move to accept the motion with B put into it.
Is everybody clear as to what B is? Do we need to read it again, or is it ready?
I'd be happy, Mayor, to read it into the record. So basically, it's to adopt the resolution, amending Rule 4.73 of the City Council procedural guideline to provide that public speakers will normally be limited to three minutes in addressing the city council. However, the mayor may shorten or extend the time limit for public speakers as he/she deems necessary or prudent.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. And a second. Is there any other discussion? Then I'll call for the votes, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just working this out in my head, I'm not, I appreciate what Randy and Al said, and Mark, I have to agree with them a little bit. But when the mayor spoke, I kind of made my decision, because she's right, we are available. And you can call us, and it's easier to work on a one-to-one basis rather than sitting at this podium. This is not a debate podium, this is a comment, public comment. And it is difficult if you're not used to doing it. But it does get easier, and you should be able to shorten the time to three minutes, in my opinion. So I'm going to have to say aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
No.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion is passed, four, one. Next item?
Next item is the treasurer's report for the period ending June 2011.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city council members. Before you, this evening, you have the treasurer's report for June 2001. And most treasurer's reports that I give, I always talk about yield, and how much yield we're, we're getting on our, on our portfolio. But tonight, I wanted to talk about the, the most important factor, and that is the safety of the funds. And this is, this money that the, that I invest for the city, it is all of our money. It is, it is every single taxpayer's dimes, pennies, dollars. It is your money. And so I would, just want to talk about the safety. We have three, three places where we mainly invest our funds. First with the state of California, the local agency investment funds. Well, I guess, I want to say, we believe that is safe. There is, there is legislation specifically that states that all the late funds must be maintained for the cities and for the special districts and the counties, that the state of California cannot go in and grab, or borrow, or extort any, any of those funds. So, you know, with the state, you know, that is truly safe, because, you know, they, they turn around and make different investments on behalf of all the participants in that pool. The other place, and it's places where, where we invest, is in, right here in Galt, in, in local banks. Currently, or I should say, for the month of June, we have about twelve million dollars just in, right here in the local banks, and two banks mostly, and that's Farmers Emergence and Premier West Bank. Now, with any financial institutions, those financial institutions have to, what is called collateralize those funds, which means they have to put up one hundred and ten percent of securities for, for every, for every hundred percent that we put into their account. And what they do is, they take those securities and they put them over with a third-party custodian. So if anything happens to those financial institutions, we as a city can go directly to that third-party custodian and get those securities. And that, again, that's at one hundred and ten percent of what, what we put in. The last item is what I, are government agencies, and that's Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank. Well, I, there again, I guess we believe that they're safe, as far as relying upon the United States government. So those, those are the entities that, that we mostly invest in. Now, having said all that, I will say, of those agencies, just over this past fiscal year, ending this past June, we have had fifteen of those bonds called, okay? Well, I normally keep about seven or eight of those. So what that means is, those bonds have been, have turned over three times, just within a year's period of time, which is a considerable amount. Normally, it's about one and a half times, as far as turnover goes. And the, the other thing I always say in June of, in this meeting now, is I always report on what the city made in their interest as far as the fiscal year. And I remember, and I was driving here tonight, I, I got to tell you, the, I remember now this, twenty, twenty years ago, actually, it was August sixth, nineteen ninety-one, is when I was originally appointed treasurer for this city. And I remember the very first time I issued a, the interest report, and that, it was the very first time in the city's history we ever earned over one million dollars in interest. That was huge, huge, okay? Well, now, twenty years later, I will tell you that the city has earned seven hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-five cents, okay? Interest rates have obviously dropped a little bit, okay? So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'll ask for your approval of the treasurer's report for June 2011.
Was there anything cheerful in that report you overlooked?
I didn't say it was cheerful.
Okay.
I just said I wanted a touch about the safety. In those twenty years, we have not lost a penny. This is your, this is your money, it will remain your money, and you will not lose a single penny.
Thank you for that half note.
How about that?
Okay.
It's there, the money's always there.
Unless the governor gets to it.
Yes.
Any other comments from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilwoman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Our report is accepted unanimously, and thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Next item, please.
Next item, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Galt determining to comply with the voluntary alternative redevelopment program pursuant to Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code in order to permit the continued existence and operation of the redevelopment agency.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
I'm going to take this report in two parts. I've asked the city attorney to help me. City attorney's going to first start by talking about the legislation itself, what it does, and then update the council on recent legal activities between the California Redevelopment Association and the California League of Cities, against the state of California challenging the constitutionality of these bills. And so I'll turn it over to Steve, and then he'll come back to me with some fun financial information about some recommendations, how we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council. As, as we reported at the last meeting, the, the state adopted two companion pieces of, of legislation. The first bill, AB 26, essentially put redevelopment agencies out of business, and the, the second bill set up a quote-unquote voluntary program. And the ordinance that's presented to you this evening for consideration for first reading is the ordinance whereby the city would agree to make the voluntary payment. And Inez actually sent me a little article today that kind of put the voluntary payment in really a, a very good perspective for me. The, the article talked about an airplane that was in the process of crashing, and the, the people in the airplane were facing imminent death. And the stewardess came forward and said that they were selling parachutes, and you could voluntarily make a payment and buy a parachute if you wanted to continue to live. And that's basically the situation that we have here, that we're about to die as a redevelopment agency unless the council agrees to make a voluntary payment. The ordinance that's presented before you, presented to you this evening is pretty short, but it has four very important parts. The first part is, it says that we do, in fact, agree to make the voluntary payment. The payment for the first year has been estimated for, or not estimated, it's been provided by the Department of Finance that our payment will be slightly over one million dollars in the first year. The second part of this ordinance indicates that we are making this payment under protest, and that in the event that the litigation that is now pending challenging both AB 26 and 27 is successful, or if there is a stay, which essentially stops the progression of the, of the legislation, that we will, in fact, not make the payment under those circumstances. The third part in this ordinance is, it indicates that it is our intent as the city to ultimately recover this money from the redevelopment agency, and authorizes us to proceed with an agreement between the redevelopment agency and the city whereby the agency would reimburse the city for this payment. And the last important part of this ordinance is it makes it clear that the city, by enacting this ordinance, is not pledging any of its general fund revenues or assets to make these particular payments. So that is the ordinance that's before you this evening. The other thing that I wanted to touch on before I turn time back over to Jason, is update you on the, on the litigation that is pending, that was filed on July eighteenth by the California Redevelopment Association and the League. The litigation was filed in the Supreme Court, and the basic argument put forward by the CRA and the League was that both of these bills were unconstitutional, because they violated Prop 22, which was adopted by the voters in 2010 by a sixty-one percent margin. And basically, what, what Prop 22 said in, in simple terms is that agencies are not, local agencies cannot be required to, to give up their money for special programs of the state, or to move that, that money to, to the benefit of the state, or agencies of the state, such as school districts. And that by passing AB 26 and 27, essentially, what the state is trying to do is to get around Prop, Prop 22. What the, the state's response to that argument has been that, no, that's, you know, you're, you're making this far more complicated, that really, the, the state legislature has the ability to change the legislation by which redevelopment agencies exist, they have the ability to, to terminate their existence. And the response back from the CRA has been, let's, let's be real about what we have before us. We don't have one bill that just kills redevelopment agencies. We have a companion of two bills, and the purpose is not to end redevelopment agencies, the purpose is, in fact, to raise one point seven billion dollars by extracting it from redevelopment agencies for the benefit of the state. And that's the reality of what is going on. So that's how the, the arguments have progressed in this litigation so far. As I indicated, the litigation was filed on September eighteenth. The state's response, initial response went in a direction of the Supreme Court on July twenty-seventh, and CRA replied to that state response on July twenty-ninth. So now, the, the state Supreme Court has kind of given the parties an opportunity to frame the argument before it, and now the Supreme Court will decide whether or not it wants to continue to move forward with this litigation. They don't have to keep it at the Supreme Court level, and they will also decide whether or not they're going to issue a, any kind of a preliminary stay in this case. The CRA has asked for the court to make a decision by August fifteenth, and the reason for that is because some of the deadlines in AB 26 start to come due by the end of August. So everybody that is, all the redevelopment agencies need to know, what are the rules of the game going to be? I think by virtue of the fact that the Supreme Court asked for this expedited briefing by the state and then the CRA, is an indication that they are inclined to, to move ahead and to consider this case. While I don't think it is extremely complicated, it obviously is a huge piece of litigation, and just in this first year alone, as I indicated, there's one point seven billion dollars at stake. I also expect that there's going to be some sort of stay issued by the court, and that they will put forward a briefing schedule that provides for this case to be resolved probably by the, the end of this year, because the first payments are, in fact, due in January. So that's, that's my, my best guess as of today as to what the Supreme Court would do. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and if there are no questions, then to turn it back over to Jason.
All right. So, so what's at stake? What, the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight, what, what does it do? Why, why are we recommending the council consider this and approve it? Basically, all redevelopment activity is suspended right now, with the exception of certain contractual obligations. We have contracts that are already underway, we're allowed to continue those, but all new activity is suspended, and the council is aware, we have a lot of redevelopment projects that we are engaged in and hope to be engaged in over the next several months. We issued a little over fourteen million dollars in redevelopment bonds back at the beginning of March of this year. About nine million dollars of that is, is new money for new projects. We have that earmarked for several different programs and projects in the redevelopment area, including a lot of projects in Old Town, property acquisition for redevelopment. We have the Central Galt corridor project, the C Street project that was referred to earlier, the Union Pacific Railroad property redevelopment and parking lot project, just a lot of things that we are, you know, right in the middle of, that are currently either on hold or being moved forward in a very limited fashion. We have a number of other projects that we do on an annual basis. We have a facade improvement program. We have low moderate housing income funds that we've used in the past for a lot of different projects, including the Galt Place project that recently opened up in Old Town, and annual housing rehabilitation funds that we make available through grants and loans to low-income households and families within the community. All of- All of those projects are at risk without this ordinance, without being able to move forward. As Steve said, we're hopeful that the CRA and the League will prevail, and we ultimately don't have to make these payments, but this ordinance will at least allow us to move forward, continue to move these projects forward, and operate the agency. One of the challenges is where do we find $1 million? That's the required payment in the current year. A little over $1 million in the first year, and then about $240,000 every year thereafter if this law stays in effect. As Steve also mentioned, there's no general fund money at risk, city's assets are not at risk, we're allowed to use redevelopment money to make the payment. The challenge we have is we don't have $1 million in redevelopment funds available. We do have the bond funds, but you cannot use the bond funds to make this payment. And so we need to look at our existing cash balances and other things, and in working very closely with our finance director, we've come up with a recommendation of how we can make the payment with the least pain to the city and the programs that we're trying to Basically, the legislation allows us to suspend, normally we take 20% of the tax increment received through redevelopment, and it gets put in a low moderate housing fund, and that's what we've used for some of our, these low moderate housing programs. For this payment only, we're allowed to take that money for one year and use that to pledge towards this payment. That's about 500, we estimate about $570,000. So our first recommendation is to use that money. We have about over $200,000 in fund balance and cash from that that we can use. We also have some increased revenue that we expect through increased property taxes. Our property taxes are turning out to be a little bit better than we had anticipated for both last fiscal year and this fiscal year, so that'll be an uptick that we can use. And also, we're recommending delaying some internal debt repayments. We had some money that was going to be coming from that fund to pay back park capital and traffic capital that we used to loan to the Galt, for the Galt Place project, so we would delay those repayments for a year. That would give us $570,000 out of the low moderate fund to be able to make at least a portion of the payments. The remaining $442,000 would come from three primary sources. One would be increased revenue that we expect from increased property tax values from the redevelopment area. The second one would be from the suspension of our facade improvement program for the foreseeable future. We have about $50,000 a year that we dedicate to that program. We would simply not be able to carry that out. We would pledge that money for this initial payment plus future payments, and it would also require delay payment. Typically, the redevelopment agency pays for services provided to the agency by the city, so we have city staff that provide services for the redevelopment agency. So money goes from the redevelopment agency and reimburses the general fund for those services. We'd recommend taking a portion of those funds that were pledged for this year, delaying that, and waiting until the following year to make those payments. That frees up a little over $100,000 that we can make from those payments. So all of those sources kind of combined together, and it's described in greater detail in the staff report, without making any contributions from any of the other city funds, we're able to make that one-time payment. We also believe that we will have sufficient funds on an ongoing basis to make those annual payments of $240,000. Not telling you it's going to be always easy. Certainly, there's some pain that goes along with it from some of the programs we have to delay, but in recognition of the significant projects we have out there and the bond funds, and the significance here that those would do, the recommendation of staff is to adopt the ordinance and move forward with our redevelopment operations with the hope that we never actually have to make that payment in January, that the CRA and the League prevails, but in the event that it does not prevail, then we're prepared to make the payment, and we've shown how we can do that. Be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Are there questions from council?
Oh, yeah, I have questions.
Okay. Well, Councilman Singleton, please.
I think I should have known that. At least on my desk, on page two, it says, where are you going to be taking, oh, I'm sorry, that's another question. It says you can appeal this by August 15th, but it's by a quite narrow, yep. What are some of those grounds for appeal, just to let me know what they might be?
Basically, what was provided in AB 26, the first piece of legislation, was that the Department of Finance had to tell the agencies how much your payment was going to be in the first year. And there's a formula for that payment, and to the extent that we believe that the Department of Finance has miscalculated that $1 million number, we have 15 days to file an application to appeal that number.
The finance is reviewing those calculations so that we can, will know if there are any errors there, and then we would be able to submit an appeal. This reason we have, at this point, we have no reason to believe that those numbers are inaccurate, but we will verify that.
Also, you suggest suspending one of the agencies, the low and moderate income housing fund. Who's this going to affect in our community? And how's the fund usually dispersed? I mean, I don't want to take something away from people in our community that are in need. I'm just curious as to how that's going to affect that fund.
Actually, Chris Rice gave a nice report to the council a couple of months back about where these funds are spent and kind of a history of how much, we've curtailed that program significantly over the last couple of years because we've used a lot of those funds for Galt Place and some other projects. I believe we've had about $25,000 in the budget in the last couple of years, and that goes towards grants and loans for low-income households. A lot of it goes to the mobile home parks. They have a, you know, roof repairing, AC unit, or different, you know, siding work or whatnot. I think there were some even pictures that were shown, so there's certainly some good that comes from that program. What we're, what we think right now at this point is because that program is funded out of the low mod funds, we can only use one year's worth of the low mod funds for this program, that it would only be a one-year suspension of that program. It would not be an indefinite suspension similar to the facade program, that that would, once we make this year's payment, that that program would continue in future years.
Okay. Another question is, and maybe you answered this when I was trying to find the page here, I'm not used to using my desk, I'll be using paper here, is why would staff expect agency tax increments to be higher? Is it just because of the new Galt Place and the Booster restaurant?
Actually, the increase is a result of, we had estimated that the redevelopment agency, the value would actually go down by 12%, and it would follow the same trends as the city property values. What we saw at the end of the last fiscal year, though, and I think we received the information on Thursday, so that's when we were starting to come up with these numbers, we were working through the last couple of days trying to come up with the numbers, those estimates seemed as if they were too conservative. So we're actually thinking that the value will actually decrease by about 4% as opposed to 12% in the redevelopment agency. So we're not talking about the city taxable value or assessed value, we're talking about just the redevelopment agency. The appeals also that we thought would be more significant, there were several appeals of property owners in the redevelopment agency, and most of those appeals have been satisfied already, they've been resolved, so we know what that value is now. Before, we took the conservative approach and presented that 100% of what was being disputed or appealed would be in favor of those persons that had the appeals, but now we actually have the information, and it wasn't as significant as originally estimated. So the adjustment primarily is two things. The assessed value, we're thinking that we estimate at 12%, it now looks to be about 4%. And then the amount of appeals have been satisfied or resolved, and the amount was not as significant as originally budgeted.
Okay. Just one more, I think it's just one more. The elimination of the improvement program, I thought it said improvement program, the remaining amount is $150,000, $153.43, you have in the report here. What was that program?
The facade improvement program?
Yes, what was that used for? Just doing?
Well, it's actually done a lot of good. We did it for Lincoln Way.
Lincoln Way, right?
The property on Lincoln Way on C Street, there on the corner of Fourth and C Street, those buildings that were renovated, and now under construction is Spahn's Factory, the facade there along Fourth Street, the monies are being used, so certainly they're worthwhile funds, and it's been a very successful project, and we hope to be able to continue it. But looking at where we have discretionary funds, we don't have very many, and so that's one of the ones that had to go, unfortunately.
Okay, and that's one thing I worry about, is you say to the elimination of the facade improvement program, I would really just like to have that suspended, too. I would not like to see that go away completely because it helps some of our smaller businesses here in town to improve the look of our downtown area. So I just worry that you say payment is postponed, that it's going to keep getting postponed, keep getting postponed, and I just want to make sure that my feelings are known, that I really would not like to see that go away because it does help our small businesses improve the looks of our downtown area.
Yeah, and that one we'll have to evaluate on an annual basis, depending on what the revenue situation looks like. If we end up getting a little bit more money than we thought, then we can always bring it back, and we can bring it back partially. So instead of $50,000, maybe we only have $20,000, and we put something in there for the fund, and so we can look at that on an annual basis.
And the amount that we're looking at going forward would be about $200,000, it could be as high as $240,000, but the increase in tax increment might make up that amount. That $150,000 had to do with the support services provided by the general fund, so the facade improvement was a lesser amount.
Oh, okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments?
No comment. I don't think so, please. First of all, I'd like to thank Jason and staff for ploddingly coming up with where we can bring the money to you from, and I know that all the staff, not just yourself, we've all really thought about it a lot, and Steve, so we really don't have a choice, you know, unfortunately. That's my comment.
Okay, any other comments?
Excuse me, just one second. I did not ask this, I want people to understand something out here, we all understand because we've read the packages. If this is not passed tonight, would you please let them know what happens with those monies that are sitting in the redevelopment agency? Do they just sit there?
Yeah, I mean, we're out of business. We have to start winding down, and we continue to make our indebtedness, our obligations that we have that are out there, but other than that, we can't move forward with any projects. We're dead in the water.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize for buttoning in on you like that.
That's okay. And all this information that we have is online, too, for the public to see the same things that we're looking at when we make these decisions, and we know they're not easy. I just had a couple of questions. One, the money, the payments that we are not going to be making to our budget. I think redevelopment was one of them that was going to make a payment to our general fund. Now, does that affect what we have budgeted?
No.
Okay.
No. What it does is basically delays the payment that we were going to be making to the general fund, and we've got, we have plenty of money available in the general fund, we don't need that money in the current year, so the delay of year does not have any effect on any of our budget, doesn't affect our, we don't have to make any reductions in expenditures or anything else in order to make that.
And what was in the back of your mind for future years, the $240,000 that we will have to make after the first year?
Yeah, we've definitely gone through that exercise and figured out several different sources. One is increased property values. According to calculations from the finance department, the revenues are going to be a little bit higher, I think, than what we originally projected. We have some other programs that we're eliminating, such as the facade program, reducing some expenditures, also receiving some additional revenue. Beginning this next year, we're going to be receiving about $50,000 in loan repayments from the Brewster's Restaurant, when we made some loans for them to do that work. Those revenues will start coming in at about $50,000 a year, starting in the spring of 2012, so those combined are enough to make those payments.
Okay. I would just end my questions with a comment to say that we have to have faith in our community that we can move forward, and that's kind of what is driving my decision here, is we have to look to the future, and what we're trying to decide tonight is to invest in the future of our community. And I believe that if we are allowed to continue with our redevelopment, the returns that we're going to get from this, from our investment are going to be worth what we're giving up as far as maybe some of these short-term things like over the facade program and things like that. So that's my comments.
I have one comment.
You have another one?
Well, I didn't, I didn't have one yet.
Okay.
I did want to say that we, hoping for the best for the city, we'll hope that when it gets taken to the Supreme Court, that it is going to get shot down. And the other thing that kind of goes along with what Barbara says, if you look at the numbers, we'll get a lot more than we're giving, and we need to focus on the positive and go forward with, you know, building our community the way we'd like it to be.
Thank you. I didn't mean to insinuate that you had already given a comment.
Everybody just kind of.
We overlooked you, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Okay, are there any other comments or questions?
Give me that gavel.
Give you that gavel. You're going to hit me on the head with it, huh? Then I would entertain a motion at this time. And City Attorney, do you have?
Madam Mayor, the recommended action is to introduce the ordinance determining to comply with the voluntary alternative redevelopment program pursuant to Part 1.9 of Division 24 of the California Health and Safety Code in order to permit the continued existence and operation of the redevelopment agency, to waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue the matter to the next regular meeting.
Okay, that would be the recommended action by the staff. Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'm, I'm.
I thought I heard Councilman Shelton beat you a little bit with the motion, and Vice Mayor Powers seconded, so I'll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers? Aye. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Motion is passed unanimously. Is there another action we need to take on this tonight?
I'm anxious.
Okay. Then we'll go to the next item, please.
Okay. The next item, a lease agreement with the Gathering Place for two city-owned houses on Fifth Street.
Yeah, the city does own two homes located at 411 and 417 Fifth Street. The home that faces Fifth Street is approximately 1,000 square feet, the one on the rear to the alley is about 900 square feet. The city assumed ownership of these properties more than a year ago when the Galt Boys and Girls Club dissolved in our community. Since that time, city staff has only done minor maintenance items, mowing the weeds and keeping things so they don't detract from the aesthetics of the neighborhood, but haven't really done much with those properties. We developed a few different options in the past, but never been able to move forward with any of them. Several months ago, Pastor Larry Brand of the Gathering Place Church approached both the mayor and myself with a proposal to do something with the homes. They proposed to fix up the homes. The homes are in bad shape, if you've been by them, a lot of roof repair, AC, windows, just a lot of work, about $52,000 worth of work needs to be done. They proposed to fix them up and then to turn them into some type of a, not homeless shelter, but a shelter for individuals in transition. It could be battered women, which is one of the main points that they first brought up to us, is women seeking shelter, maybe women that have children, or people that might be going through some type of hard divorce or economic situation, or they may stay from 30 to 90 days. The big difference between that and a homeless shelter would be, homeless shelter is much more transitional, where you had every day, you have dozens of people coming and going. This would be a more stable environment, a transitional housing type of environment. The mayor brought up this item back on May 3rd, got direction from the city council. City council agreed to give staff the time to work with Gathering Place to develop some type of agreement, lease, come back and present that to the council, which is what we have before you this evening. The staff has developed the proposed lease agreement, discussed it with Gathering Place there, they are, they are in agreement with the lease. I'll go through with you just briefly the key terms of the lease, provides for a 30-month lease with six months for them to make the required improvements to the buildings. The market lease, or the market rent of the buildings is about $1,750. We got the information from the local real estate agent. The tenant, the Gathering Place, would agree to complete renovations, estimated to cost $52,500 at their own expense. Cost of the improvements would be credited towards those lease payments. The tenant would be responsible for paying all taxes, insurance, utilities, and maintenance of the property, and then at the end of the term, the tenant will be offered the right of first refusal to purchase the property if the city decides to sell the property at that time, and at the fair market value minus the amount of rent paid. and the, at the fair market value minus the amount of rent paid by the tenant at that time. Gathering Place has also expressed an interest in doing something similar with the JC Hall, which the city owns, which is directly north of these two homes. This time though, they're not, they don't have an actual proposal. They want to do the homes first, and then possibility of coming back later to ask the council's request to enter into something similar for the JC Hall. I think it's much, there's a lot more work needs to be done on JC Hall. They don't quite want to bite that off right yet until they get the houses underway. Since the improvements constructed by the tenant will be a credit against future rent payments, the city will not be receiving any income or rent during the term of the lease. Hope the city will save money because it will reduce our costs associated with maintaining the properties. Right now, we have staff that have to go out and mow and keep vagrants out of the buildings and other things. In addition, it'll be improving the property value. I'm sure the neighbors that live around there would appreciate having all the improvements, new landscaping and things fixed on the home, so that it's not, not an eyesore in the community. Since the work is being done on our facility, we do recommend that the council approve a waiver of building fees associated with the, the building. There are several different alternatives the council may wish to consider. Instead of pursuing this lease agreement, the city could pursue or elect to sell the properties. The current estimated value is less than a hundred thousand dollars because of the amount of work that needs to be done and because of the market conditions that we have right now. And that's one of the reasons why we never elected to sell in the past, is because it's not a good time to be selling property. If we did choose to sell, then the money would be credited back to Fund Twelve, which is the Quimby Funds Parkline Development Fees, which is where the money originally came from. City could seek to, seek requests for proposals from a private development company that may want to come in and do something with the property. Again, it's not recommended because we don't know, don't believe there's a lot of interest out there. Or we aren't confident that we'd be able to get a lot of money out of the sale of those properties at this time. Or the city could choose to do nothing and continue the status quo and continue to maintain those properties as we currently do using city staff. I believe there is a representative, should be a representative of the Gathering Place here in the audience. If council has any questions, otherwise, staff is happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions or comments?
Of course I do.
Okay. Councilmember Singleton?
Who's the representative? This gentleman here? Would you mind coming up? Ask you a few questions. First, real quick, you said the city will not be collecting any rent, and that's during the time of them trying to build and doing their remodeling, is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, six months to start there to complete the work, and then they have thirty months' worth of credit because they will, the construction is valued at fifty-two thousand dollars at the fair market value of that. It gives them basically thirty months of, of rent, rent-free.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
My name is Dana Demollen.
Good evening. How are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Good. And I was going to ask about the smoke alarms and CO2 things, but I read further on in the packet that those are going to be in the, in the building. I have just a couple of concerns, and I'd like to address them to you. My concern is it's a, if you're going to have a woman's shelter or, you know, something of that sort, is security. Are you going to have some kind of security in place?
Yeah.
Because I do worry about, because I've seen it happen too many times, that the significant other finds out where she's at, and then we have problems in town. And I just, and I'm a little concerned about how you're going to address that.
Well, there's, yeah, there's several, there's several ways. That is, that is a use, one of the uses, there is two different buildings. We have, we obviously have to be careful about both of the uses of the facilities. If, if the, the person that is in transition in that, you know, happens to be a battered wife.
Right, that's...
Or somebody that's a protected person. We have provisions for a representative of our group to be onsite twenty-four seven. And there will be, I know that we also have some people that have volunteered to act in, in those capacities. But to hire a security, there will not be a separate security. It doesn't really actually work, but actually, in some cases, it creates a more difficult environment if there's a security firm in place. It draws attention. It's not desirable to have that. But we, but we have found in, in other facilities, there's a women's shelter in Loda House and that, that they have volunteers who are trained in, 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 in security-type issues or in how to respond to those issues on that facility at twenty-four, twenty-four seven. For a number of reasons. One is to maintain the integrity of the facility because sometimes the transitional person may be bringing other issues along, along with them.
Right.
And, and to maintain the integrity of the facility and also to maintain the protection part of it. So we've certainly thought about that. We, we have experience in it. We're not, we're not, it isn't our first rodeo in this, in that figure situation, so...
Nor did I think it was your first rodeo.
Right.
Maybe then what we can do is, this will help along with, this is my last, my suggestion to you, is if this is passed tonight and approved and you guys take over the two buildings, my recommendation, and I would strongly advise it, is to have the alarms activated on that, on those buildings. Because it is Alamo, at least that's what it says.
Yeah, we have a relationship with that, with that.
That would be good. Not, not even an audible. I would just have to go directly to PD. And also that if you guys could have a panic button established in those buildings to where you do feel that threat, PD could know immediately by pushing that button. Kind of like in, you know, a, AMPM, if you're, you're cashier in AMPM or whatever, they have the silent alarm.
Great suggestion. I think we have discussed that. I, I don't know if, we do have a relationship with Tony, Tony Ama, and he has provided, they have provided the security in other facilities we have. We took up the DMV building in, in the Loda Air, and we have a thrift store there. We have alarm system in there. We do have panic because of money there, so we do have a panic button there.
Well, the reason I would say activate it now as soon as you get it is because we have had issue with people breaking into there. Just recently, this week, I believe it was, they broke in there and getting into the attic and stuff. I would go ahead and have it activated and set, just like I said, silent to the people.
Yeah, we're, we're...
Because...
We're going to secure it.
Because once you start building and rebuilding there, you're going to start bringing equipment, you know, brass, all kinds of metals that are recyclable, okay? And I'm just trying to protect you and your property and also our interest in, in that property. It would be my, my suggestion.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So is, do we have a motion on?
I'm going to have a comment.
Okay.
I want to commend you for stepping up to the plate because I know that a lot of people have looked at those buildings and not thought of anything to do with it. And, you know, in the way things are going with the state and the whole United States, we're going to have to come back to taking care of our own in more ways than just that. And I do want to commend you for coming forward, seeing a vision, and going to make something out of nothing, and I appreciate that.
Any other comments? City Clerk, would you read the recommendation on that?
Sure. Before you tonight, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with the Gathering Place for two city-owned houses located at four eleven and four seventeen Fifth Street.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that that resolution also does include a waiver of building permit fees associated with making improvements to the property.
Waiving of the permit fees.
And excuse me, Steve, one more thing on your article, Article 4.1. Is that, I think that that is not something that should be in there. It's not a rental thing as far as between the first and fifth.
There actually is a provision for the charging of rent. The amount of rent is fixed at seventeen fifty per month. And then it provides in other places in the lease that in the event that the tenant does the improvements, value is fifty-two thousand and change, that they'll get a credit against that, that monthly rent that's established.
Okay, so let's just stay there as far as being on time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
You've heard the recommended, is there any other comments?
No, that's it. I'm sure.
Any other comments? Okay. You've heard the recommendations by the staff. Is there a motion to that?
A motion that we recommend, we adopt the resolution, is ready?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any other comments? Can I call for the vote?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? Uh, Mayor Payne?
Aye, and good luck, and we appreciate your plan.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Okay. The next item, yeah, this doesn't look good. Oh, there we go. Adoption of mitigated declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the State Route Ninety-Nine, State Route One O Four, Twin Cities Road Roundabout Interchange Modification Project.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Chris Arias, Senior Planner with the City's Community Development Department. The item we have before you is approval of the Twin Cities Road Roundabout Project Mitigated Negative Declaration. In two thousand and ten, the city adopted an update to the Traffic Capital Improvement Program, and one of the new projects identified in it is the Twin Cities Road Roundabout Project. We're here tonight to ask that you certify the environmental document for the project. Before I give a brief discussion on the project's mitigated negative declaration, the city's consultant designing the interchange will provide detail on the project. Ron Boyle with OmniMeans is here tonight to give a presentation on the project. Before I turn it over to Ron, though, I would just like to say this project has been a great team effort. I've worked with the Public Works Department, with OmniMeans, with SWCA Environmental Consultants, and Caltrans to get this document together, and it was a lot of fun. Anyway, now, Ron.
Thanks, Chris. Mr., Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Ron Boyle with OmniMeans. Engineer, I'm the consultant project manager for your project on Twin Cities. I'm just going to do a very brief presentation. Some of you were not in the council last time that I presented on the project. And so just give you an overview before you take your action. The reason that we're here is just to review the project issues, talk a little bit about what we've done so far, and then present the environmental document. We're currently about halfway through the project, but the bulk of the heavy lifting, at least on the design side, has been completed. The environmental document has been circulated, and it's before you tonight. We will be going into right-of-way acquisitions very shortly, and obviously finishing up the plans, followed by bidding the project and then construction. This map just shows the area, the red line being the environmental study limit, basically the area where impacts were looked at. The larger blue boundary was the notification to the public as far as the project. So when we had our public meetings, those were the people that were noticed. The reason for the project is probably evident to most of you that live in Galt, the congestion in the area. The project is, is a ten-year project rather than the typical twenty-year project. It's to address traffic in the near term, reduce congestion. And because there was another project that Caltrans was proceeding with prior to this one that included pedestrian circulation ADA upgrades, that's also a portion of our project. So there's some, you know, some minor improvements to the bridge railing and much of the other pedestrian circulation ADA upgrades, we would have included anyway. So it really was not an additional cost to the project. The reason we're doing it now is congestion's getting worse, and it's not just local congestion. SR One O Four, which is also Twin Cities Road, is a regional route. So you have regional growth, traffic growth, that is going to worsen traffic in the area regardless of any growth within the city of Galt. The ultimate solution is, is ways away. You're dealing with the Central Galt Interchange now. That took a lot of the city's capital and effort. A project like that to occur at Twin Cities is at least ten or fifteen years away. And so, looking at this project with the state project that was going before this, the agreement by the state to look at a ten-year project, we had a unique opportunity to solve this problem. Basically, today, the traffic, or in about two thousand and nine, the traffic was ten thousand five hundred on a daily basis, and we see that growing within the project lifetime to about seventeen thousand eight hundred. So about a seventy percent increase in traffic. The ultimate interchange would cost over fifty-five million dollars. So we're looking at a project that will cost quite a bit less. As I talked about, they were able to get about a million dollars of Caltrans funds, state funds, towards the project to help kickstart it. Those funds will come in, I believe, during construction. And the interchange configuration also provides the opportunity. And the reason for that is that part of the project is to not replace the existing bridge. So we're going to leave the two-lane bridge in place. But then we have these closely spaced intersections that really make it difficult to provide left-turn pockets, provide additional lanes across the freeway. And that's why we're going to be looking at roundabouts, as I'll show you tonight. I talked about the bridge railing and trouble getting across the bridge right now from a pedestrian standpoint, and we'll address that as part of the project. So initially, what we did was we had a public meeting back in January of two thousand and ten. We explained the alternatives for the project and also did a kind of a workshop on what are roundabouts and how do roundabouts work. We took public input. Some of that has been incorporated into the plan. We refined the design. We came back to the public just a couple of weeks ago with another public meeting and, and presented that design, which I'll show you tonight. This is kind of a quick summary of what we showed at the workshop. The alternatives that we did look at was obviously doing nothing. That's always an op, that's always an option. We also looked at large signalized intersections, which is more the typical approach to traffic problems. Then we looked at modern roundabouts. The super signals, as we called it, was the wide, the large intersections, signalized intersections. And you can see they need to be placed further away from the bridge in order to neck down the road to get across the bridge. These had some very severe right-of-way impacts, was not well-received, and did not really operate all that well either. We've also looked at roundabouts, kind of in the same configuration, same distance. They allowed us to make maybe slightly smaller roundabouts, but we had much larger impacts to property. And so ultimately, the, the plan that has been approved by Caltrans and will be finally, finally approved by Caltrans after certification of the environmental document is the closely spaced roundabouts to the interchange. And a unique feature of this design is a new freeway on-ramp in the southbound direction. That, that new on-ramp allows traffic to not have to circulate through the western roundabout. If they're going southbound on Ninety-Nine, they just make a free right and go onto the freeway. That allowed us to keep that roundabout to a single-lane roundabout, which is for, you know, ease of drivability is easier for those not familiar with roundabouts. Over time, I think most people will find these are very simple to drive. But we were focused on trying to keep this as simple as possible. The advantages are, with the roundabouts are, we have a lot of capacity. We're talking level service A and B as opposed to D or E with a signal, even the larger signals. They take the least amount of right-of-way. However, they are going to require that we do work on the, on the freeway. The work that's going on out there now is not part of this project. We're coordinating with them to, as much as possible. But that work is not part of this project. But you'll see similar work to that when this project does go forward. And I just wanted to briefly touch on, I'm going to show you a movie of the roundabouts in operation, but give you just a brief overview of some of the elements of a roundabout so you kind of understand what you're going to get on the ground out there. This is the eastern roundabout. It's East Stockton Boulevard and Twin Cities. Just a blow-up of that. And you can see that there's some elements of the roundabout that are there to direct traffic. So I'm looking at the splitter island here that redirects traffic around the roundabout, lets them know that there's a change in the roadway coming up in the intersection. The truck apron, that's how large trucks will circulate through the roundabout. They don't drive up on it, but their trailer will track over onto it.
How large are the trucks that that will accommodate?
This will accommodate the largest legal truck, an SEA long, as we refer to it. So it's, it will, it'll, it will also take oversized vehicles. You know, they may have to maneuver and take multiple lanes. But this roundabout's much larger than it sort of looks here. You can get a larger vehicle through here rather easily. Other things that you'll see, and speaking to the pedestrians, is the pedestrian shared-use path. This is basically for bicyclists that are not comfortable circulating as a vehicle through the roundabout can exit prior to the roundabout and go outside of the roadway on a ten-foot-wide shared-use path. Pedestrians also use that pathway. You'll notice that when pedestrians do cross, they have a refuge, and these are rather large so that they are looking, you know, they're safe. It's not a little four-foot refuge. I think these are minimum of ten feet, in most cases probably sixteen or eighteen feet wide. And when they do cross traffic, they cross looking at tra- Uh, and when they do cross traffic, they cross looking at traffic in one direction. So for a pedestrian's standpoint, uh, they're much safer. Um, you, uh, traffic is slowing down, uh, you're looking at one or two lanes of traffic you need to cross at a time. Uh, I just kinda wanted to point out some of the safety aspects, because it's really the benefit of roundabouts. There's a lot of benefits to roundabouts, air quality, uh, beautification, uh, but safety is probably one of the larger ones. Uh, overall, traffic accidents are, are up, you know, up to seventy percent less with a, a roundabout. So just a few, uh, aspects of, of that. This, this graphic just shows the, uh, the right-of-way that will need to be required. We're not acquiring any, uh, physical structures. However, in the, uh, uh, northeast quadrant, uh, the tractor sales will need to move some of their inventory off of that lot. Most of the rest of the, uh, right-of-way acquisitions are sliver takes along the front edge. And then if this will play, this is a, uh, simulation of the traffic in 2023, and, uh, you'll notice, it'll zoom in here a little bit, and, and so this is, uh, traffic's moving about one and a half times speed here. We speed it up a little bit so that you kind of get the impression of, of, uh, what's going on, but this is actually a little fast. Uh, and for the most part, you'll see there are occasionally are some queues that start to form, uh, they will clear up. Um, but, uh, probably one of the most interesting things about roundabouts is that when we do these is, uh, people ask where's the traffic, and, and it's because a, a roundabout is, is dispersing traffic, it's not bunching it up into queues like a signal does. And, uh, so you will have queuing, that's not, that's planned, that's, uh, planned for, but it's very, usually very short, and usually it's a moving queue. So, uh, one of our bigger, uh, challenges was the off-ramp traffic, obviously, that has no stop. That, the off-ramp will not change from what it is today. And this goes on for a while, so I'd be happy to keep playing it, or I'll, I'll go on.
If you can move on.
Yeah. Uh, so what's next is the certification of the environmental document, after which we will take that and package it with the draft project report, which has already been approved by Caltrans, that'll give you a final approval of the project. We'll complete the plans, the right-of-way acquisition will begin, we bid the project, and we construct it.
Thank you, Ron. Um, the project mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring and reporting program were, were prepared by SWCA Environmental Consultants. All impacts associated with the project are reduced to a less insignificant level. The public review period for the document began on June 15th and ended on July 15th. We received three comment letters. None of the comments raised new environmental issues. Our responses to the comments are included in the report as attachment four. However, we do have a late addition, a couple of late additions to attachment four. While the Air District was supportive of the project and agreed that it would reduce overall vehicle emissions, they asked that we include analysis of existing traffic levels to the proposed project. We were unable to include it, include the data before the agenda packet was put together, so I put that, uh, I gave that to you earlier tonight. In addition to that, Caltrans has asked for, uh, some revisions. Number one, they asked to remove Caltrans logo from the front page. Number two, they asked to remove references to NEEP on pages nine, ten, and forty-one. And three, remove all but first sentence on page seventy-seven, notes regarding greenhouse gas emissions, which reference Caltrans. Uh, this came to our slate, so we didn't have time to prepare the changes in the document. Staff has recommended that City Council adopt the resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, program for the Twin Cities project. And that concludes our presentation. Staff from resident, staff and representatives from OmniMeans and SWCA consultants are available to answer any questions you might have.
You have any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, would you read the recommended action, please?
Recommended action is to adopt the resolution approving the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the state Route 99, State Route 104, Twin Cities Road Roundabout Interchange Modification Project. In other words, the Twin Cities Roundabout Project.
Okay. You've read the recommendation, is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion that we approve the recommended action.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? Then I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz or Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is the Youth Committee waiver request for Aquatic Center and Skate Park Hours extension on August 20th, 2011. We did already have a speaker on the subject, who's still here, still with us.
Okay. Um, so basically, the history with this is, in May of this year, City Council approved, um, the Youth Committee's budget of fifteen hundred dollars to plan activities for this fiscal year. Um, in that presentation, it included the skate park and the aquatic center, um, knowing that there would be a three-dollar charge per teen to attend the event. Um, once they began, began planning for the event, they decided, or hoped, that council would revisit and possibly waive the entrance fees to the aquatic center for that night in hopes of, um, being able to spend more money on the event to make it a bigger and better event. Um, if you waive the fees, those will, the, the costs will just be absorbed into our budget. Um, the costs are the staff, staffing fees and any supplies and materials such as, um, maintenance supplies for the restroom. Otherwise, um, the Youth Committee, um, will discuss actually paying those fees out of the budget, the original budget, and/or just, um, charging a minor fee to the teens.
Okay. Are there any questions? You heard a speaker earlier, uh, today, sort of justifying why they would like to have the fees waived. Need discussion?
Well, I'm always, all for doing anything for the youth. I think that, I know most of us are champions up here for that, and so anything that we can do to get them involved, uh, in the community'd be great, and at no fees, even better. We, we, we need that.
Do you want to read the, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Shelton?
I was agreeing, I think at this one point.
Okay. Would you like to read the recommended action, please?
Uh, consider waiving the entrance fees for their, the teen event to be held on Saturday, August 20th, at the Gore Aquatic Center, and extending the closing hours for the skate park from dusk to nine-thirty.
You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion?
A motion makes up.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Any other discussions? If not, we'll call for the vote.
And that is waiving the entrance fee. I didn't quite see it right when I read the motion. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz or Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item, Central Galt Corridor Rehabilitation and Union Pacific Railroad Parking Lot.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Uh, Bill Forrest, project manager with your Public Works Department for the Central Galt Corridor Rehabilitation and Union Pacific Railroad Parking Lot, CIPs. First, I'd like to thank you for your support on, uh, your council item, uh, G point three. Uh, otherwise, this would probably be one of the shortest presentations, uh, in the As indicated in the staff report, uh, we came to you in May 3rd. Um, what I just want to highlight, uh, about that is the public outreach that the project did. We had two public outreach meetings, a business stakeholders meeting, and presentations before the Parks and Rec Planning and Historic Advisory Committees, and then a presentation of the preferred design to the City Council on May 3rd, which, uh, we'll review for your benefit. Uh, as mentioned, today's presentation will quickly review the preferred design, uh, for each segment of the Central Galt Corridor Rehabilitation, the parking lot, and then, uh, staff's suggested phasing plan. Uh, copies of the presentation are available, uh, for members of the public in the back, and copies of the presentation are, were handed out to you earlier. Uh, with me is Ben Woodside of Calendar and Associates, and making the presentation would be Daniel Miller.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Your Honor and, and council members. It's, uh, thank you for hearing us and allowing us to continue, uh, on this next step of the project. Um, as, as Bill mentioned, uh, our goal today is to present to you, ultimately, to present to you the, uh, the, uh, phasing, proposed phasing plan for the project, um, to get input from, from council on, on that proposed phasing. Uh, I'm gonna start in very briefly. My goal tonight is to be very succinct but informative, um, and I'm gonna begin by giving a very brief overview of, of the preferred plan that we presented back in, um, May, uh, and then go through the proposed, uh, phasing plan, uh, as it is, and then discuss some of the options, um, that, that are open for phasing on the project. Uh, the project is made up of, uh, five, five portions, five pieces, uh, beginning with the, uh, Palm Park, uh, UPR, UPRR parking lot, which is, uh, in that, uh, area between, uh, the, the railroad and Fourth Street. Uh, the Civic Gateway, which is at the other end, uh, of, of the corridor at, uh, Civic and C Street. Uh, the C Street corridor improvements themselves, uh, a landmark feature at C Street and Lincoln Way, and Lincoln Way improvements from C Street to A Street. Uh, the Palm Park UPR parking lot and Fourth Street front edge, uh, is composed of improvements to Palm Park as it exists now, that's this portion of the, of the park, and amenities, um, park-like amenities, uh, such as amphitheater, rose garden, shade shelter. Uh, another component is the UPR parking lot, um, which would serve a future train station. And then the third component is improvements along Fourth Street that would, uh, provide safer pedestrian crossing to Old Town area, and also additional parking through the creation of angled parking.
I'm sorry, could you point to where the future train station is again?
A proposed location of that would be, uh, just-
Couldn't see it down here, so-
Oh, sorry. Uh, the next component is the Civic Gateway, again, at, uh, Civic and C Street, so this would be, as you come off the interchange, a proposed monument entryway into, uh, the corridor itself. Uh, as you pass through that, that gateway, the, uh, C Street improvements, uh, would involve, uh, curb, curb adjustments that would, there's, there's actually two sections of C Street that, that would be looking at. There'd be from Civic, uh, Civic to Lincoln, and then from Lincoln to Sixth Street, and with, there's kind of a little variation in how both of those would be treated. Um, this first second section, which is Civic to Lincoln, would involve, uh, curb line adjustments, which would reclaim some of the unused or underused on-street parking, and make that, uh, planting area buffer between sidewalk and street. That's shown here where the trees are, planting of trees and, and some pavement enhancements. Uh, the second component is, uh, protected crossings or, or, uh, enhanced crossings for pedestrians that make, uh, make, make safer crossings, so, uh, an island, uh, for pedestrian refuge, and some bulbous that make the distance shorter to go through. The other portion of C Street is from, uh, Lincoln to Sixth Street, uh, similar, except we understand that the importance of retaining the on-street parking in that section, so, uh, there would still be a planting area provided, but we would also be retaining on-street parking in that section. Uh, the landmark feature, uh, again, is at Lincoln Way and C Street, and that would be proposing a, uh, a smaller version of a, of a gateway monument that would mark the entrance towards, uh, the Old Town area. And finally, the Lincoln Way improvements, um, center basically around parking improvements. Uh, one is, uh, a creation or, a creation of a, an entrance from Lincoln onto the, the B Street parking lot, which currently there's only an exit off of. Uh, making that B Street parking lot a little more usable by creating a mid-block crossing, a safer crossing to get to the east side of Lincoln from that B Street parking lot. And then, uh, the, the last component would be the creation of angled parking, uh, replacing some of the, uh, uh, parallel parking with angled parking on the east side to make up for some spots that would be lost by creating the mid-block crossing. Uh, so that preferred plan, when added altogether, we did, we, we took those pieces and, and looked at the cost that would be associated with this, um, and it, it comes out to about ten point two million in the preliminary estimate. Uh, the current funding available, um, comes, uh, the current funding is, uh, based on budget approval, is four point two million dollars for this project. Uh, the city is also currently pursuing a, a SAICOG grant, a community design, um, grant that, uh, could provide up to two million additional dollars. Um, they have to go through the approval process and see if they can retain that, but that would, with the addition of that, there's a potential for a six-point-two-million-dollar budget to, to accomplish. Um, we went through, uh, stepped and worked, worked with the city staff to look at how this project may be phased, and came up with a, a strategy that, uh, looks at a phase-one project base, which would use the, the existing funds, um, a phase-one extended project, which would incorporate the additional funds should they become available from the grant, and then a phase-two improvements project that basically are the components that can't be afforded after the phase, uh, four-point-two and the two-point million, two, two-point-oh million. Um, the proposed phasing that I'm gonna go through, um, again, this is for discussion, for input from, from council. Um, I just want to go over kind of the factors that staff and, and, uh, considered, at least considered as we were trying to figure out the order to, to associate these different phases. Uh, first is suggested priorities. Uh, Bill mentioned the, the outreach process that we've gone through, and, uh, we heard a lot of, in, we got a lot of input about what was important, what, what people felt was important. We heard that from the commissions, and we heard it from council when we, when we came last, uh, last time. Uh, constructibility considerations, um, there's some practicality to the order that things should be done in. You don't want to put in improvements, come back and have to rip up some of them to do the second phase, or, or to do another improvement. Um, applicability of grant funding, excuse me. Um, there are certain components of this project that lend themselves more to the grant that, that's being applied for, so we, we wanted to look at that and make sure that we are doing those in association with the money that would come from the grant. Um, suitability to sub-phase the project, can a, can a phase be, can a project portion be broken down even further? Um, what are the maintenance needs? And bang for the buck, um, the money's being spent, it should be done in a way that, that you can see the actual improvements, um, when they're done, and that it can be appreciated, and it leads to a better community all around. Um, so now I'm gonna walk through those three different types of phasing that we, we talked about, the phase-one base project that would spend the, the existing four-point-two million dollars. Um, the first portion of that is a Palm Park improvements, part one, so that would be, um, enhancement of, of Palm Park, and then the addition of Palm Park on the other side, uh, the walkways and, and landscaping improvements. It would exclude, this, this part one would exclude the shade shelter, uh, that, which was, is proposed, sorry, shade shelter that was proposed here. Sorry. Uh, the bandstand, which is on the, uh, north side of the, of the park, and the rose garden. So those would, would be put off to a later phase, but the other improvements that you see on, on that plan would be implemented. This, uh, base project would also include the URRR parking lot. That would serve, again, the train station, in the meanwhile, before the train station there, it would supplement parking for Old Town. Security fencing at the park, so this is gonna be a public park with, with people coming there. Safety is a concern. Um, there's a, there's, obviously, the train is adjacent to it, so installation of a security fence that, that keep people from crossing from the park into, uh, the railroad. Uh, Fourth Street fundage improvements, we talked about the additional parking that could be provided by angled parking, and enhancing these crossings into Old Town. And then the, the last portion, there's, it's kind of an either-or situation. Um, currently, we're, we're doing, uh, environmental study, uh, we're going to be implementing a, a noise study for, uh, the parked area, and how the railroad could impact, uh, the uses proposed for that park. Um, the outcome of that, um, our environmental consultant is, kind of gave us a heads-up, the outcome of that could, um, require mitigation in the form of burming, uh, tall burms, or even sound walls and portions of- and portions of the park between the railroad and the park. If that's the case, then these park improvements would kinda instill the cost of putting in that sound mitigation, and that would use up basically that $4.2 million under that. If after the noise mitigation is, or the noise assessment is completed and it's not found that that mitigation is necessary, there is an opportunity to implement some utility underground costs on C Street. So there's a portion of C Street from about Market Street to Lincoln Way that has some overhead utilities. That equivalent amount of money could be used to do that undergrounding and get some of that portion of C Street done under this first phase project. I'm gonna go on now to the Phase 1 extended project. So this is the $6.2 million that would incorporate the grant funding should it become available. So this proposes all the Phase 1 base projects that I just went over. And in addition to that, the C Street improvements from Lincoln Way to Civic and from Sixth Street to Lincoln Way. This was placed into this extended project, made use of the SAICOG grant money should it become available because it lends itself most to the requirements of that grant. It's a portion of it is a transportation grant. It talks to pedestrian access through areas, improved traffic safety and such. So this kind of was a good fit for the use of that grant funding. This last portion, we're calling the Phase 2 improvements, it's kind of a culmination of all the other preferred plan components that wouldn't be afforded under the $6.2 million. So the Palm Park improvements, Part 2, that's the shelter, the bandstand, the rose garden that were left out of Part 1. The Lincoln Way improvements, portion of them, the mid-block crossing and the B Street parking access. It could include the Lincoln Way improvements, Part 2, which would be the angled parking, the two gateway features at Civic and at Lincoln Way and C Street. City and water sewer master plan improvements, which kind of was a side project, could be implemented in a later phase. And then if the utility undergrounding on C Street, that wasn't picked up because of the noise mitigation was necessary, we have that listed as possible for Phase 2 realistically. If the C Street improvements go in, you would wanna do that undergrounding before or at the same time because you don't wanna go back and have to rip it up to do the undergrounding. So the reason we're providing these numbers are, again, we have a proposed first phase plan, but we wanna get input from council. These are just kind of the other items that could be moved around should there be other priorities that council had. With that, that's my presentation, and I'm open for questions.
One brief thing about the SAICOG grant. The SAICOG board advertised the application guidelines on June 21st, and we are applying for what's called a Category 2 grant, which is a complete street grant. We're taking advantage of, as mentioned, the improvements, the full improvements to C Street, which includes bicycle enhancements, as mentioned, pedestrian enhancements, not only in terms of crossing of C Street, but in addition, providing a landscape, for lack of a better term, buffer strip between vehicle traffic and the existing sidewalks.
Ready for questions, comments? Council?
What is, as I understand, Union Pacific's letting us use that property for?
Maybe the city manager...
Not the UPRR letting us use that property for?
$1.
Okay.
Haven't finalized the lease agreement with them, but that's the proposal.
I thought it was, but I didn't want to assume. That's why I asked again, because it is their property and we're building on their property. So we're beautifying their property along with golf, so it's a win-win situation for everybody. All right? Thank you.
Any comments on the other end of the...
Quick question, just to refresh my memory. Greg or whoever can answer it. The $4.2 million that's currently available, that's correct, that's measuring monies, correct?
No, that's mostly redevelopment. Probably, um, maybe money, just about $200, $30,000. I don't believe any, any major rate.
Almost all redevelopment. Are those redevelopment monies we already have acquired? Okay.
Any other comment? Councilman Shelton?
I like the work you did, and I like...
I'd like the proposed phasing.
Absolutely.
It's a nice presentation, thank you.
And I think that's what the staff is asking for, is the direction from the council on the phasing for one. Maybe you should read the requested action?
Received the presentation regarding the phasing alternatives for the Central Gulf Corridor rehabilitation and UPRR parking lot projects, and provide direction regarding phasing priorities.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Staff's recommended phasing.
Are there any questions on that phasing before we call for the vote? Everyone understands? Okay.
We should know this fall whether we're successful on the grant or not.
Fingers crossed.
Hard push into SAICOG to get that, but it's very competitive.
Yes, it is.
Whether we get it or not, we can still move forward on the majority, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed. Thank you very much for that presentation. It's exciting. We're just gonna, our fingers crossed that we get all the money. Okay, next item.
Next item is under Communications, Opposition to SB 469 Land Use Superstores. And we adjourned this, the mayor received some correspondence regarding SB 469, which is a bill requiring additional regulations on superstores, and Barbara will tell you more about that in just a minute, the mayor, I'm sorry. The mayor asked that a letter be drafted to oppose the bill, which is before you tonight in your package.
Actually, the way I understand, and maybe the city attorney can weigh in on this, is this bill is asking for really another layer in our EIR to do an economic impact as required by the state. And now, my main opposition to this is that, again, it's taking away local control instead of our deciding what we want there. The state's gonna dictate to it. So if there's any questions other than what's in the packet, we're asking for you to authorize a letter from this council saying we oppose that bill, SB 469.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome. Okay, what do we need on that? Do we need a vote, a motion and a vote? Is there a motion?
Emotionally spent, the letter to Senator Burgess opposing SB 469.
Councilman Cruz has moved that we send the letter, and it was seconded by Councilman Shelton. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Thanks, Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. We will now adjourn to the redevelopment agency. We'll call.
Board members, Powers?
Aye.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Public comments? Do we have any public comments?
I have no speaker sheet at this time.
Hearing, we have no public comment. We'll move to the consent agenda. If you would read that, please.
I will. We have three items tonight. The first, approval of the minutes of the meeting of July 19th, 2011. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. And number three, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending June 2011.
Is there a motion?
Motion for the president.
We have a motion from Councilman Shelton.
Second.
Second, from Councilman Singleton. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed. Next final.
Next item is the city clerk's report, formation, we're going to adjourn from redevelopment. I didn't ask. And reconvene to the Gulf City Council. Okay. Formation of an ad hoc committee for the planning of the 2012 Gulf Independence Day celebration. And I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney.
Okay. Your councilmembers, there's a resolution in your packet this evening, and what this proposed resolution would do would to form an ad hoc committee that is comprised solely of two councilmembers. And the reason for that is because that is the simplest and most flexible type of committee that you can form. If you form an ad hoc committee of just two councilmembers, then you're not required to post agendas when you wanna meet, it's not subject to the Brown Act, and those two councilmembers certainly have the ability to invite any members of the community that they desire to participate in the planning or provide ideas related to an Independence Day celebration. So that's why the resolution was prepared in that manner. But I did prepare a sheet that was on the, before you this evening, and I just wanted to make you aware of the fact that there are other options as it relates to this committee. The second option, which is number two on this sheet, would be to form an ad hoc committee composed of the council and other members of the community, where those other members would actually serve on the committee. If the council wanted to proceed in that manner, then that type of ad hoc committee would in fact be subject to the Brown Act. It's a little bit more difficult to form because we would in fact have to decide who was gonna be members on the committee and how they were gonna be appointed, but that is an option. The last option we wanted to make you aware of is a standing committee, similar to example the youth committee that we adopted an ordinance on this evening. And there again, if you form a standing committee, it is in fact subject to the Brown Act. We would recommend coming back with an ordinance that formed that type of committee and would get some more direction from you as it relates to the guidance. If you start out with the simplest, the ad hoc committee of just two city councilmembers, and you do that for a year, and that works, great. If it turns out that you need to step it up and make it a little bit more complex, then it's easier to go from one to either two or three. It's a little bit more difficult to go from two or three back to one because that means we've gotta get rid of the committee and tell people we don't really want their service anymore. So that's the recommendation before you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any comments, questions on this? I'm gonna look that way first.
No, I'm happy with the way it is now. Believe after, you know, one full year, I mean, you guys do it together, enjoy some of the time. And I've heard it was very positive, I mean, I was there, I liked it. And I think next year, you know, you do it one more time and then you may come to council and say, this is working, you know, I don't wanna be on the committee anymore, whatever, let's be my own supporters of the public. I think that's a good option.
Okay. That's all.
And I think with this one, the way we had last, the way we thought maybe originally was every council member was gonna put somebody, but because of the Brown Act, blah, blah, blah. But this way, we can call for all the volunteers we want, so we can have, you know, and I think that's great, the more the merrier, my personal opinion. And, you know, there is a lot of interest out there in people serving on some of these committees. I'm happy to report already, so.
That means the council appointing individual person, you can bring on an army of...
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea. Councilmember Singleton, by chance, do you wanna make a comment?
No, I was just gonna make a motion to accept what staff recommendations are and then volunteer her.
Okay. Well, I think we have...
We have to get this thing through first, don't we?
Yeah. Okay. You wanna read the recommended action on that, so we know what we're voting on?
Adopt a resolution establishing an ad hoc committee for the planning of the 2012 Independence Day celebration.
Okay. That is the recommended action, and I believe you, Councilmember Singleton's already made the motion?
I did make the motion, to, to staff recommendation.
And we have a second? Any more discussion on that? Then we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed. At this time, do we appoint those councilmembers?
It's actually not on the agenda, so my recommendation would be that we bring that back. It'll be another day coming back as well for next meeting. We'll be all together.
That's good. What did he say? Yeah, sorry, we can't talk now.
Mumble, mumble.
Okay. Moving along, do we have comments by staff?
Just, yeah, one comment, actually. The reason our police chief isn't here this evening is had a little bit of a personal crisis. His house in Reno was engulfed in flames earlier today.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
And his son was in the house. Fortunately, it looks like he got out okay with some smoke inhalation. He's been pretty, but he should be fine. So I don't know anything more than that. He was rushing off to Reno earlier today to go see what was going on, but he'll be back when he can be back. So luckily, it looks like there was, other than property damage, there was no, nothing serious as far as injuries. But wish him well and hope he'll be back with us soon.
Yeah, I think we all join you in keeping our fingers crossed.
Absolutely.
Everything is as minimum as possible. Any other?
I do have one that brings to mind, Brian Smith's husband was in a motorcycle accident today. He's in Walnut Creek in ICU. Don't know much more about it. He's having some arm problems. He's talking, he's coherent, was complaining about the hospital, so, but they're gonna do some more testing, some MRIs, so we don't know exactly how bad it was. He was all helmeted and booted and padded, so he's doing all right, but an extra prayer wouldn't hurt.
Would you keep us apprised of this progress, please? Okay. And any good news out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have more comments, less good news.
Uh... Liz? You have any good news? Okay. Are you sure?
Oh, I do have good news.
Okay.
I'm in the grandma.
Yeah! Do you have pictures that you wanna flash?
Everybody here's probably seen all the pictures.
As it is, I'm gonna be a great-grandfather.
Wow.
This is my first one.
I'm already a great-grandmother four times, so I got you all beat, I think.
When I was a boy, and it was a little girl, so...
You didn't have to bring that up.
I was just gonna say, I'm too young to...
Yeah, all right, okay. Let's move on here. Anything else?
Oh, you know, I do. I do have some reminders, that's why you were looking at me. Okay, let's see what we have. The big news is our Walker Park grand opening on Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 with the ribbon cutting at 11:30. There's gonna be the Junior Warriors football game going on, and there's gonna be soccer games out there, lots of kids.
Oh, fun.
Free hot dogs. Other fun things that I'm not thinking about right now.
Is it gonna be ready for us?
Might not be able to flush the toilet, but...
Absolutely, positively, yes.
We're working on it. Okay. Just a couple other things. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held on August 10th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. The Planning Commission meeting will be held August 11th, is that right, Sandy? That was not canceled, right?
Uh, it's still up in the air.
Okay. Well, we're tentatively August 11th in the council chambers at 6:30, and that brings us to our next city council meeting.
Are we ever gonna get pictures of our committee so that everyone knows who they are?
Well, Parks and Rec had a meeting tonight, but they weren't all there, so...
Figuratively speaking, or...
Well, you didn't have the entire committee, so I, you know, wanna get a shot of the entire committee. But it has been problematic, but we are...
Have them. If you can get them to come down sometime and sit together and have a picture, I think that'd be better. I know how much trouble it's been for you, and, you know, having them... I saw the pictures, sorry, because they need to be sitting somewhere.
Yeah, I've actually tried to schedule some off-time, you know, when can you meet at night? And it's hard because somebody's always on vacation. Every week, there's somebody on vacation.
Well, vacation should be over now, so that should...
Well, there's one on vacation this week, which is why we didn't have a full rec commission. commission. We should, we should be getting close.
Don't, uh, one of the, the, um, one of the commissions has their own shirts and stuff, right? Since when was that wrong? No? Never mind.
That's what I know.
Anyway.
Is that a suggestion?
Dress appropriately would be a good suggestion. I'll just throw it out there.
Okay. Okay. Um, is that all you had to share with us tonight? Congratulations on your beautiful grand child. Okay, now we'll go to councilmembers and I'm gonna look down to Councilman Shelton.
What is this, pick on Randy?
Yep.
I think like...
Giving you an opportunity.
Okay. Like most all the other councilmembers, I went to National Night Out and located several of the neighborhood watch programs and, uh, wanna thank those individuals that, uh, neighborhood watch programs and staff and everyone else that are doing that. That was great. Apparently, we have two functions. I believe this weekend is Herald Day, so.
Oh, yeah.
If I had that opportunity to go back, that is very unlikely. Makes a lot of fun.
Thank you.
We had lots.
Councilman Cruz, what have you been up to?
Just, I've been in every year of legislating, getting my hands on it. Actually, I, I enjoyed myself thoroughly yesterday. Uh, National Night Out was a great success and I think a lot of, most of that credit goes to T J Goddaddy. Very good job, well planned. Um, can't say enough, keep, keep having your legislators, the more we have of them, the more they're gonna listen. Redevelopment needs to be there. It's, it's your money, it's our money. We don't need the state taking away from us.
Glad you're on our side.
On, on that note, the, uh, League of California Cities is looking for a vice president from the northern part of California. Um, I'd like to, hope that Mark would maybe submit something. I think a town like Galt being represented would be great and I think you've already gone out there and pushed a lot for us and I'll vote for you in September if you...
Thank you.
Think about it and I think it'd be great. I think it'd be great for us. We gotta try.
I think she's still not your advocate.
Uh, yeah.
She already did, she told me that yesterday.
Um, yeah, I did a couple of things. I, I'm sorry, I'll miss Herald Day and the, um, Walker Park opening. I know there's a lot of hard work done on Walker Park. I'll think of all of you guys when I'm in Puerto Vallarta. And, uh, and, um, uh, I, I had a great time on National Night Out, too. Uh, I think T J does deserve great credit for it and also all the community leaders that were out there. Um, I don't want, if I start mentioning them, a few, I'll forget who they are, but there are leaders and, uh, community volunteers at every one of those groups that were taking great pride in the night and I, I really had a lot of fun. I, I really had a lot of fun. It was really nice.
You ate a lot, too, I know.
I didn't eat till the last stop.